Okay. Okay, so I'd like to call this. Regular time meeting. Of the Columbia Board of Select, June eighteenth, twenty twenty four, seven P M. This is a hybrid public meeting, we're all to attend, and actually, Chris and Chirac here as part of the board, were asked to keep your video and your audio on at all time unless there's noise in the background, then you control your mute, okay?
Yep.
Uh, and we already did the pledge allegiance for our other meetings, so we'll forego for this meeting since we're all the same people, and you're at home, if you'd like to cite it for us by yourself when you do that.
I will.
I move to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor? Back in more than a minute. Approve the minutes, we have two, Board of Select and regular, I move to approve the Board of Select and regular meeting minutes for June fourth, twenty twenty four, that's the second set of minutes. Pretty sure. Any discussion? I know in favor.
I'm looking here on the board. But.
Well, you're gonna stand up.
I'm here on this.
We want, you're here.
I'm answering. For nothing.
Uh. I move to approve the Board of Select and regular meeting minutes on June seventh, I move to approve the Board of Select and Special Meeting Minutes for June seventh, twenty twenty four, that's for when we push that field down. Meeting, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Audience, citizen.
Yes. Yeah, John, it's one of the things I've done. There's any capable staff who would like to, um, build a work block over a model on the way to school, one of. Disc golf team. And he needs to get it done quickly, and so it is something that the town would, um, pay for the materials. And looking for it, so that we can ask.
So that changed, and we'll discuss it during the transfers, but Eddie couldn't wait through aging out. When he found out he would have to go before the boards and commissions, so he requested transfer the money to Thunderwood, it's being made by Tom Grant, and you're concerned with him, but he's going to try to get the disc golf volunteers to help him build it. That's the latest thing. So move from Boy Scouts to Disc Golf. I'm gonna leave, sugar.
Where's that thing? Um, it's on the, well, it was originally that lion's blood tree, and, and it's yellow tree of the, I mean, the look, it's place maybe, there's the, it's similar.
Yeah.
And. And, I mean, it goes back into the playing tree, but it goes in and you get it for a disc golf ball. But it's challenging.
Yes.
Something I know you have to see. Right now, it's strong.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you. Uh, seeing no other audience or citizen, I'm the next, whole business, tax and business incentive program ordinance.
Okay, this is, uh, came before the board on May seventh. Uh, the consensus at the time was that, um, he wanted the taxation payment to be uniform for all projects regardless of value. So you can see that, uh, the change that it made here. I believe that on the new business side. So as a member of that board, this is, uh, when we, when we asked, this was the recommendation, we cannot, yeah, you can go, definitely recommendation, and the A D C has been free to accommodate your concerns.
Okay. Steven, let me make my attention on the actual ordinance, on page five of it, there's one question that the town attorney wanted to discuss, the theme in yellow.
The date?
And there's the thing to go down there, but count five.
Start with the project with the value of the documents.
So originally, this was taken from other, this was from each town, and I guess they had anything between twenty-five thousand, five hundred thousand, the discount would be fifty percent of the normal discount, or in between the before and after assessment.
I think it should be deleted because it doesn't belong with our.
It being, when, when you're trying to accomplish equality, it's a regulation by the town to take it out. You all agree?
Okay.
What is it? In the ordinance. So really, a motion to Senate with a meeting. As and then, as and then. Well, I'm sure, move that we, uh, send the post office regarding the Columbia Tax and Business Center Program forward to a talk meeting.
Um, I'll, I'll create the notes and everything, and then it's worth, but you'll have to step it down and make that happen. So you made a motion? One on it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So four yes, one abstaining. So Chris, your update on the Horace Porter School HVAC project?
Okay, so, um, last night, the HVAC committee, we got together, we received an update from Bob Banning at Silver Petrocelli and Associates. He said that they're pretty much completed with the design, that they anticipate by the end of the week. Um, the initial with the bid specs, and they have some internal reviews to go through, so they're hoping within the next couple of weeks, it'll be ready to be sent to the commissioning agent, who hopefully will be under contract in the next week, to, uh, to start looking at, um, the target would be to, um, get a bid out in the street for construction by the week of July fifteenth, uh, give them a couple of weeks to, uh, take a look at, have, um, um, an onsite walkthrough with bids due around the thirtieth of August, uh, so we could pretty much take a look at, so we're targeting to try to get this under contract, um, by the early fall. Um, I did discuss with the committee, uh, Stephen, would you had, uh, challenge the committee to do to target a September first, twenty twenty five um, completion date, um, so they understood, we discussed a couple of different options, um, one of which, uh, which we kind of reached consensus, I think, in order to best set ourselves up for success to meet September first, twenty twenty five, uh, we're recommending that the, um, switchgear, which is um, a long lead item for the electrical, uh, we found out last night, it's about thirty-five weeks that we would, um, choose to break that out of the proposal for the construction firm. The town would procure that directly from a switchgear supplier, which gives us a little more control over the timing, gives us a little more control over when it comes in, um, one of the plus sides of that, um, is that it's one less thing that the contractor needs to worry about in getting going, it's not gonna delay what they do, because it's gonna be something we supply. Um, that's not gonna need to be installed until really near the end of the project, because that, uh, part of that is installed outside, there's, there's some interface, but essentially, that can be, um, installed August timeframe, uh, as kind of a, one of the last items to do, so, cause they're gonna have power throughout, you know, with the existing power, existing switchgear, until that gets installed, so that's what we're proposing to go forward with, I think that's the best opportunity we have to have control over the schedule. Um, that was, like I said, consensus that, um, the HVAC committee members met, um, Bob Banning, you know, had, had kind of waited, he had kind of leaned towards the single, but that was before, um, I had told them that we were, we were challenged to, you know, get this completed by beginning of September next year, so that's what we plan to go with. And, um, as soon as we get the project manager on contract, um, I've already had discussions, uh, he plans on um, building a schedule, uh, which we can track in M S Project Management, and part of the direction we're gonna give to the contractors is to provide us a schedule in that format, so, so the project manager can track, uh, project status, and, uh, I guess be a good tool to keep us on track.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
How much is it?
How much is the switchgear?
Yeah.
Um, hang on, it was rough estimate of a hundred and seventy-five thousand for that, uh, but Bob was gonna go back and get more firm numbers.
Whether we, whether we purchase it or come down with the contract from the bid, it has to be purchased.
Correct.
We're just, we're just doing it so we get it here at a timely fashion.
Correct, and, and arguably, right, um, I mean, I'm not sure if a contractor can get any better deal, but, you know, we, we're, we're not, you know, dealt with a markup, and one added thing, Mark, I don't know if you had mentioned about the, um, outcome from the ever source discussion? About the power from the street?
With what, the power from the street?
Right, so.
Couldn't quite hear that, did they say we don't have to cut through a parking lot?
Correct, correct, that, that's what they, they determined, is we're not gonna have to cut a trench through, uh, through our parking lot, um, to do that, so, um, so that's, that's good news.
Good news.
Less disruption, less cost.
Great.
So where do they run it, if it doesn't?
I just, all I care about is not going through my car park.
And if it's then that's tearing up. We just want it, we don't need it.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Uh, new visits, T R C proposal for additional water fed investigation.
Uh, we're gonna put that at home, and we'll delay.
Okay, Columbia Lake, uh, nothing, appointments, and redignations, the appointment Savannah, Ken, McKinney, what?
Mackenville.
Mackenville, that can do. So Savannah was a rare find, she's a weapon agent in Massachusetts, already well versed. Um, she has environmental science background, field inspection, biology, all sorts, there are all these certifications, and weapon manipulation, she used to work on boards and commissions, but she's applying for a zoning enforcement position, um, she feels she can pick it up, uh, pretty quickly. What I've, I've offered her the position, but because she is a officer, I would need Board of Select to vote, so she could be sworn in. And she's starting on Monday, she wants part-time, she doesn't want full-time, she's good. Uh, so she's willing to do the job in nineteen hours, which is what Connie was doing. And, um, the only difference, Connie used to come and spend, uh, two full days here, um, because Savannah's a mother, she wants to have two, Tuesday, Thursday, four hours here. But what, she wanted six hours, twelve to six, and wanted the four hour day, and then the other days in the morning, she'll work the moment. And, uh, she can work in Terry and have all the files, put me out there, which you can do, pay to do, um, the home office just as well as from here. So, uh, I, I think this'll work. There's one of the toughest positions, right now, Andover needs a zoning enforcement officer, East Anthony's a zoning enforcement officer, and another local tenant. So, high competition, and we're gonna keep on the temporary zoning enforcement we hired from Taike, uh, produce and train, release some overlap.
So I move to appoint Savannah Mackenville as zoning enforcement office. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um. The next one, I have to. I, I, I get around, I ask how busy, how things are going in our department weekly. I visit, say hello, see how things are, I had a meeting with Beth, and I had, and then I had a meeting with Kyle, the foreman. And I asked him, you know, kind of give me a rundown of what's happening with D P W with all the culverts and the swales and, and I was told that because of the weather and the rain, and because of the expansion that was done over Rec Park in those years, and the growth along the heat and stuff, they have, literally, her D P W crews have, all they've been doing has been mowing, mowing, and mowing, and mowing, weed whacked, and, I mean, I made a comment, why is it bringing the blanket as hay? And I was told because they have so much to mow, that everybody's on a machine, and they can only do it once a week, in the springtime, it grows faster, and shit, mowing, it's hay. I mow my lawn at least twice a week, okay? I hate to look at hay on the grass, especially on a town with, um, with, you know, we did that thing up at Rec Park, that people going up there to try and drive the fields so they could play, and I asked, so, I said, I asked Beth, and I asked Kyle, what do you need? What are you needing? And I was told, we need help, Rec Park, keeping it maintained, we, we doubled the size of Rec Park, we've not doubled the size of help up there. So it kind of, and I'm gonna be honest, I, I kind of was upset because we tried to have two seasonal people last year, and we were kind of told, um, the seasonal people, if we just had a full-time person, we believe they would help maintain the fields and stuff, and with the amount that they're doing, it's just, it's not good. So, uh, I, I found two gentlemen, father and son, who would, I offered the position to a couple of people, and it is a mall, they didn't want that to be done. I found a father and son who, um, will do it, and I just, I just gotta get the Department of Public Work, just working on swales, bridges, and culverts, and I, I, you know, to tell me the town looks good, that's great, when we're underwater, people are screaming. So.
We're paying them much more money.
Oh.
The town, right?
We're paying them a hell of a lot for it for mowing. So. So in essence, these two gentlemen are going to mow and weed whack, and I know them. They're my, they're my personal reference, okay, they'll do the job. Um, and then I, I saw Kyle yesterday, and I said, Kyle, hey, how you doing, he was in the truck, and he's got me passing him, I wasn't searching anybody out. I said, hey, how you guys doing, I see you're out on the white, on the lane road, here, what's, what's going on here? Working on swales and stuff, and I thought, you know, thank you, so. We have not had a third person at the transfer station all year, so there's funding there that will help offset these gentlemen for the whole summer. But, um, there's some money we're gonna move around also, but I, and, and their season also, I know we gave Mark the opportunity to be able to hire people, so Willie Longo and Jim Longo are going to be working and driving up into fields, uh, and they're gonna be up mowing, weed whacking, lining, not only up at the fields up there, when they're done there, they'll be on the town green, I asked for a list, and we have a huge list. Do I have that?
It's, it's under, well, yeah.
How about, you know, you guys, and I'm saying, yeah, go ahead and do this, but. I have that for, what do we do, I mean, Columbia Dam, Murphy House, Public Works Transit Day, Rec Park, Porter School, Firehouse, Senior Center, the old cemetery, the library, across the green, we own the green extends from here all the way down to Route eighty-seven and beyond, I thought, oh, I don't even know people's hunt, it's hard to read. So I, I can understand, and we're gonna have to, yeah, this has taught me a lesson. Next year, year of January, when we ask the partners to put their budgets together, don't go smoke at us, okay, tell us what you need, we have never truly denied when you told us you needed something. We may have thought of different solutions, but this was agreed to this current thing where one, one full-timer who's not been hired yet, it's not July first, we should have thought of this, so I've asked the department heads, you have to be straight up with us, we need to remember everything that's gonna happen, it's a law in July first, so these are two people that are covering the grounds for this, Mark had the opportunity because they're part-timers, we gave him that to be able to hire them. And. I'm glad they keep you notified, and people are out there.
No, you're not. Please start again.
You don't have to take any, yeah.
Yeah, the idea will be the transfer coming next month. Our initiative. All right, um, I'm just sharing with you a letter that was, um, from the Connecticut State Archaeologists, and she's writing, that's a poor letter for donkey off, uh, kind of putting together investigation into these eighteen century iron drop, I know, hot river. Keep it going there. Um, Crowe, our capital region, I'm to go, I'm to be not report, I had a meeting set up Thursday afternoon with our town planners and tribal and have an idea of what we might want to ask in the tour, if any of the board members want to come. Um, I don't think the Crowe would just schedule it, is it?
No.
So when that's scheduled, I'll tell you that they're, they're doing informal visits to municipalities, and they wanna learn about what major projects we wanna work on, what would we need their help with, with B O T, I tell you, B O T started, started talking, it was, it's, I don't, I don't know what happened. Okay, so it might be some new customer service messaging, uh, we're acting up. That's a good outreach, that's something.
Oh.
Oh, bring in, yeah. Um, just a heads up, you called me to work through Carver, from a big given a recommendation for some additional service for the, um, class series, for the five, um, actually, I, I figured two hundred, if this is correct, it ranges from, for the three classes, so we have to burn this, I think this is for three. All the way from, um, aggregate coverage of a hundred to two hundred thousand, for five hundred seventy for the three, all the way up to three million, three million for a new, for a one thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars to the third, just quick, just clarifying that, yeah, I get it, I think it's a three, it's not per, um, what are you going with here? I was kind of looking for the advice from the board on how much we think we should.
I would give them a million, I would give at least a million.
Two, right in the middle, two to nine, three hundred and, no, nine hundred twenty-three.
So it costs us nine hundred and twenty-two dollars for three music sessions, right, three hundred.
And I was figuring two months, a little.
I mean, do we make any money from the alcohol sales, or?
Well, since we'll be selling it this year, we won't. Right, because last year, we gave it to Columbia Package, but they.
So we're the leading provider.
Some profit from food and beverages and all this stuff.
So we probably didn't make the money.
It's supposed to break into people, food, that's not gonna do them.
They paid with chuck lands, um, the people who buy from the chuck land. Paid for that.
And we don't benefit.
We don't pay for the meat truck.
Are you supposed to be here a minimal?
No, you know, I actually, I don't want to, I don't want to, they're gonna be trying to.
They shouldn't take, no, they don't.
It says it's a profit thing, it's for, it's a, yeah. This be our test. So are we okay with the nine hundred something dollars?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, gentlemen, but it's not, it's acting either. Uh, wait, I have another thing to update, I had a nice meeting with Eber, I'm doing today, there was an update, and she in Judy, uh, attended the Juneteenth all-day celebration in Eber, at the Samuel Cruz house, so very well done, very emotional, yeah. She was happy about that, and she also attended the Moore Stadium School Open House, said that they had families and children, and when was that?
Julian, Julian.
Last week.
Julian, two. It's obvious, yeah. We're gonna open it up, you know, the sun to.
I'm probably.
Do you catch my guy?
For the concert?
No, no, that's.
No, I didn't.
We have, we know, yeah.
Do have.
Text my guy.
Again.
Oh.
Okay. Uh, very good. Okay, correspondence, Connecticut State Trooper two K four. We we get calls, I get, I get talked to every place I go in town, you know, no, the traffic, the speed is terrible, the speed is terrible, the speed is terrible. And we have thirty-nine traffic stops. Written warnings, thirty-one, verbal warnings, three, infractions, five. In the year, we've had, year-to-date, two hundred and twenty-seven stops. In fraction, none. Somebody said to me that I got pulled over by the state troop. They came off Route six, and they were coming up Route eighty-seven, and they pegged them doing sixty-seven. Said you get a ticket? No, I didn't get a ticket. Got a warning? Maybe a verbal warning, I guess. When it hurts, people stop. And I know I can't give warnings, I know that, I've been told, can't give a, I don't want to go. Right to take it. Uh, so you can, you analyze that yourself, and do your views. Uh, Chronicle, Open House, Moore Stadium School, right? This is, that budget's six point four, right? Okay, speaking of budget, um, you all have a list for the transfers in prime? We'll discuss it, but I move to approve transfers, so we're in forty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four as presented. Hi, Beth. Good to see you there.
Good morning.
So there's a lot of explanations to these transfers and stuff, so Beth, I'm gonna call you on every single one, but it is written down, the first one is to cover postage and supplies, and that was for the HVAC mailers and stuff like that, so, does that go in our refund?
Well, we actually took it out of health insurance to cover the postage, supplies, and the professional tax, most. Uh, maybe I can unmute. Uh, maybe I can unmute.
She is now trying to do that.
Okay.
There you go. So we were just talking about the first one, that the, uh, staff retirements and the OSHA settlement and, um, slots.
Yeah, I think Steve asked if the postage was gonna be reimbursed. I doubt it. It's not part of the construction stuff, but you can always find out when we're going for reimbursement.
Okay. Um, town history, we talked about that. We need some new web stuff, right, professional services. For retirement administrator, first of all, return conferences. That was some of the, um, okay, we went to, uh, to Okay, so we need from workers' comp, that's a good thing. It's a machine equipment, as for a new desk for the, um, social worker.
Social worker.
So, gee.
She did it.
A hundred fifty-three dollars from fuel to professional tech, and that was acquired physical, okay? Fire fighting, uh, covered budget for volunteer program, physical and drug desk, that's great. Uh, how do we take it out of health insurance?
There's a big surplus in there, so I just using it.
What's the, the child services, nine thousand dollars?
That's the last one. Boy, Judy jumped right to the end.
I do. To cover what, what, the rain, boat patrol, um, and also, when we're in the rain boat patrol, we don't have to help keep that thing good. The roof over is happy.
Yes, so the, you know, I got it out there. We finally got the major columns in. They're, they're being welded and finished now, and now they're being transported to be sanded and powder coated. So it seems everything is, will be fine. That's it, somebody.
The supply chain is still open.
We're waiting. But, um, also, just so everybody knows, if you get any calls tonight, the boats that came in, marine patrol, where? It's at the dock. So they're gonna go under, so they're trying to be able to do it.
I would actually call the fire department, see if we can get a pump down there to come, pump the, uh, hull out, and see if we can keep it from floating. I'll, uh, I'll work in the, then you get the paperwork. It'd be fifty-nine, yeah. And then we get a tow, probably, pull right up on first grass you see. Okay, um, here's one, two, Public Works to cover above budget. And then the cost repair wreck fields. Five and twelve, twelve seven, all day. For conservation, you never did. Ten dollars for accelerates. Yeah. Due to the increase, more than we bought then. Here, thanks. Beth, there's one to transfer for the Lions Parade.
Yes.
So we're taking it this year instead of giving it to them for next year's parade, July first, in, in three weeks.
They always get the money before, um, in June, so that they have for what they need for getting the parade ready. I think they had to pay for a band or something. Especially, and so they need the money now.
Okay.
And it's not budgeted in next year's budget either, so.
We'll see if the band is any good this year.
That's right.
Cover the cost of the beach mailer. Cover the goat stocks and the door store. So we are, we are tipping in five hundred dollars for the, uh, yellow tree of bog bridge, that's the decision this guy is doing.
So, there's actually money in the conservation budget. There's over two thousand dollars in supplies. Uh, I meant there's twenty-six hundred in supplies. So we could use that money plus an additional five hundred, and hopefully that covers the whole cost of the materials for the bog trail.
Okay. And then if I do what you wanted, for the, the, the third part. Yeah, so in the, the explanation, town employees who, uh, in wanted to retire in a renovation, more than anticipated. They would do payouts of vacation time, sick time revoked, transfer would all be punished upon a year-end balance of five thousand dollars. So we're going to year-end at five thousand dollars. Okay, so basically, we, we needed four thousand and seventy-two dollars for the payouts, and we wanna put a little bit in, uh, everything that always starts with a five, yeah, okay?
Yes.
Beth, thanks, it's all, you know, a lot of work putting it together, making up all the forms.
Thank you.
There, there will be more transfers. I'm just, this is just round one, so.
I thought you were breaking up, I can't hear you. Um.
Yeah, they're coming out of Steve's salary, you know, that's the next line I'm hitting.
What you're paying for with that. Listen. Yeah, we know this happens every year. How are we looking? What's your feeling?
Um, we are gonna end up with probably a nice surplus that I predicted before, um, until the next couple of payrolls get posted, um, we could be, uh, I don't wanna be nailed down to a thing, but it could be around half a million dollars, just in expenses that don't expenditure line. I haven't looked at the revenues, so we're still trying to get those all in, so. Um, we'll probably be putting back quite a bit into the general fund. The Board of Ed could be at, at least a hundred thousand, could be a little more, so they're compiling all their year-end projects and stuff they wanna get going, including the oil tank, so. Um, I should
They did a contract, is that right? Are you a little thing?
It's not contract yet. It's pending Board of Ed approval.
Okay. Thank you, Beth.
You're welcome.
So there's more down the floor? Any more discussion? All those in favor, will you share the first time? Thank you. And we'll just go refund for seventy-five dollars and eighty-five cents as presented. Do you start? All those in favor? You absolutely I move to include the payment as well, totaling two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-six cents. Consisting as twenty-three, twenty-four regular credit card paycheck.
The software package to all the teams buying in and tracks all their trips. It's like the database of everything they do.
I'm just curious.
Can you start? All those in favor? Are you interested? Thank you for your comments. Yes, I wonder what, express my concern about, um, the hay field, it's formerly known as the bank. And the dumpster that's sitting out there that's clearly fault within our flight ordinance.
I think, I think about this, uh, I didn't call. And I got a response, um, on their plans, and then I called a week later, and said he called the next day. He did not connect to Mr. J something, I always, um, go back.
But yes, and, and I don't want to sit here for months, I mean, we all are in another you know, and if they were coming and you have the well parking regulated by that nightmare over there, so. And formally make it a length of plan.
What are you gonna do to, you know, just mow it and send it to the bill? You could, it gets to that one.
Question is whether to be ordered to do that.
I know, it's probably just fine.
Can you remediate it? But, you know, in terms of that. Uh, I did call, and I said to him, listen, we're here to help you. If you have some, you know, some issues with this and that, if it's within the lines and stuff, we'll be able to help you. There's, you know, if I have to get the sanitation out there, whatever, we'll help, yeah. I said, but in the meantime, I've gotten more than a few calls about the eyesore that is now your property. I said, like, can you give me a call? I can give you a list of plant stapers that can take care of it for you, but please, you need to clean up the area. You need not return my ball.
And Bill's gonna give you a lot of stuff for it. I think the doctors, I mean, um, and I also did think about the void issue, but, but, um, all right, I'll put another call in here.
It's hope it came before the board, you know? So the problem is how there, we have things going on this summer, get, fourth to line grade, that's, we already, that's, that's, I can't bring it out, which state is that in? Who else? Excellent, very good. So it is time, seven forty, we did not have an executive session, so it is time, I want to adjourn. It's seven forty-one, all those in favor? Thank you, Beth.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Thank you, uh, have a, sign goes, and Ian, and Keith for coming with all.